Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our study session for March 28th. Tonight, we have a packed agenda and we will get started with roll call and Director Smith.
Here.
Director Decker.
I'm here.
Director Barrows.
Here.
And Director Sprow won't be joining us tonight, unfortunately, and I am here and we do have forum. And I will now turn this over to Dr. Snell, who will lead us through our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Directors of all at Ortega. It's good to see all the Board Directors here this evening who could make it. And I know that we'll also have the video recording for people to watch later and lots of content today, tonight. So but before we get into that, I just want to acknowledge flags are at half staff across the state of Washington and country again because of a school shooting. And so we know that every time we see those the news about one of those that it all hits us and we want to acknowledge the loss of that community feels and the ever going challenge that we have to ensure that students are safe every day and trust that our families give to us. And so we don't take that lightly and just felt important to maybe pause about that before we get into our agenda. The agenda is pretty robust. This time of the year tends to be one where we have a lot of updates for you and specifically related to goals that you established at the beginning of the year, connected with our equity policy and just in general. And so lots to talk about. We've kind of timed it out so that there's opportunities for you to have questions and answers as well. And then always follow up specifically with people that are leading this work for other questions as they come up for you. So thanks in advance to all of our presenters this evening. The format is I'm going to introduce the presenters and then they'll talk a little about the goal area or the work that they're updating and share some information with you and then they'll pause to see if there's any questions or comments and then we'll move on to the next section. So that's what we're thinking for this evening, similar to our previous study sessions, but maybe a little more content than usual tonight. So any questions or comments are good of the cause before we go? All right, our first update is Ms. Janelle Ephraim to talk about schools and programs of choice. So Janelle.
Good evening. So I just really want to give you an update about where we are with our programs, some of two of our programs of choice, VITA and RBG. Notifications for VITA went out last Friday and so families receive those notifications and we will have a second round of applications for VITA starting April 17th and concluding that May 12th, and that's aligned with the process for RBG as well. RBG remains, the applications remain open right now. They will close on May 2nd, but we'll in the meantime, we will have parent information sessions April 19th at 5:30 and May 3rd at 9:00 a.m. And both of these schools will open in the fall. VITA will open to kindergarten through fifth grade students and RBG will open to kindergarten and first graders. You have any questions?
I guess just my understanding is that we've had a lot of interest in both of these schools, which is wonderful. So good marketing. Yay.
Yes, we've had over 500 applicants for our programs thus far.
Okay, Ms. Ephraim will be back with us in another part of the agenda as well. So thank you, Janelle. And next I'm going to introduce Carrie Van Ostrm, President of VEA, and Jim Gray, our Lead on the PLC Project. So I'll turn it over to you both and navigate the slides for you. So just let me know.
Go ahead, Jeff. Well, first of all, it's great to be here again with my co-lead partner Carrie. It's been, it's been a great adventure so far. It hasn't always been easy to move the ball along. Of course, we've talked over and over again about our long history in our district and where our focus is now is really building a culture of supporting teachers in the classroom, those that are closest to the students. So Jeff, if you'll click on the fiber implementation plan. The first thing we wanted to do today is really re-anchor ourselves in some of these really foundational documents and plans that we brought to you before. This is the timeline of PLC implementation, every kid, every teacher, every day. If you'll scroll down to the five commitments, Jeff, these are, this is super important for us that while we may have variations across the district as we get into this work, these are the things that we're going to be super tight on as we move forward. And as you scroll down even further, you'll see in the implementation process where those different essential commitments are reflected in the implementation plan. Now, in full transparency, what we talked about with the Guiding Coalition Co-Leads, which Carrie and I met with them for about four hours today for another shared learning experience. We talked about is as we seek to narrow our focus of work to best serve students and staff, we would offer that this implementation process and the materials in here could be, I guess, part of an initiative map for us. So you'll notice that MTSS is reflected in here, differentiation, data analysis, common form of assessment. So this could be a very foundational document for us as we get deeper and deeper into the work of the strategic planning process. So and you'll see it goes, it goes out very far. So go ahead, Jeff. So the goals of our, of this, of our PLC process are are to align a district-wide PLC system in order to achieve the specific goals, areas of our VPS equity policy. In a minute, I'll talk directly about how it's directly connected, this work. We want to facilitate a system of input communication across our four essential teams. One of the things that we're quickly finding is that when we say the term PLC, the misunderstanding is that that references the work that's being done in the classroom or among teachers. The PLC is the entire system. The collaborative team is, for instance, the first grade teachers that work together or the social studies teacher or US history. That's the collaborative teams. The PLC is the entire system. So we want to make sure that we have a great process for communicating up and down. What Carrie and I and the entirety of the district level guiding coalition has tried to do is model effective and efficient communication up and down, which is why we've asked to come back to speak to you all at the end of the school year to show you and really detail out where our process is at and where we're going. And then finally, most important, most important is to support educators with job embedded and relevant professional development to achieve high levels of learning for each student. We have worked tirelessly to ensure teacher voice is reflected at every level along this path. So next slide, please. So wanted to really illuminate how the PLC process, we have two big buckets of work. One is around creating a sense of belonging and the other bucket in Jeff's arrow that he's put up a bunch of times is the PLC process. Within the equity policy that this board passed and created and passed, there are some specific goal areas that this is not in philosophical terms or in figurative terms. This is concrete, practical actions of student learning, enhance academic supports and processes to increase student learning. That's directly reflecting the PLC process, culture and climate to increase student and staff sense of belonging, curriculum and evidence-based instructional practices to advance student learning through cultural connections. And finally, something that's already happening, the board is aware, is really that progress monitoring piece that we've put into place. All these things are directly and concretely reflected in our equity policy and I'm super proud of how we are directly connecting to that work. So now I will turn it over to my partner in crime, Carrie.
Thanks, Jim. And thank you, Board Directors, Dr. Snell and the community for an opportunity to provide this update. We're really excited to be able to reflect what we've accomplished thus far, even just partway through year one of implementation. But I appreciate Jim's reminder of the five-year rollout with intentionality and that graphic is consistent with our last presentation as well because we're trying to go slow to go fast, especially if we're going to get it right this time around. So we're grateful for Director Sprow for joining Jim, myself, an additional administrator and an additional classroom teacher in a professional learning experience, shared learning experience out of town at a PLC summit, really to give a little bit broader context to the scale of the work that can come as we dig in a little bit deeper to the VPS process and soliciting staff input along the way and then appreciate the board's flexibility and patience in utilizing existing assessment measures for the progress monitoring item connected to the VPS equity policy. Because if you recall from the five-year implementation plan, the development of common formative assessments is partway through the process, but not our primary focus for year one of implementation. Similar to the sense of belonging reference that Jim referenced and that Dr. Snell has provided some direction around the commitment to collaborative work is through and through what has showcased both modeled by Jim, myself and other district level guiding coalition members. And then in an effort to bridge that sense of belonging and collaboration for principal and educator co-leads at each respective site. And so within the district level guiding coalition, we're meeting on a regular basis. You know, following an agenda, we've established some norms. Our intention is to model what a high functioning collaborative team looks and sounds like. And some of the work moving forward is in an effort to kind of tighten our internal processes so that we can do a better job of teaching and modeling before we transition towards the monitoring and supporting step that we play as well. So beyond norms that have been established for our district level guiding coalition, we're diving into some bigger picture mission vision and shared commitments. We're in an effort to have those as anchor points to move our work forward and better provide some alignment for building level guiding coalitions that are in their infancy at this stage. So some of the future items we're trying to anchor are centralized reference points for resources in the form of a VPS PLC playbook of sorts that allow us to memorialize some of the work that has already been underway historically, memorialize some of the updated structures that we're implementing with year one of this rollout and then incorporate as we provide and share learning along the way, continuing to anchor back in that central location so that all the hard work folks are putting in isn't lost. It's readily available and accessible. And the hub idea is a similar consideration for building level collaborative teamwork around the identification of essential standards, unpacking them, establishing learning targets that are associated with them, unit planning in accordance with the scope and sequence, again, so that folks don't feel like they need to recreate the wheel year after year, but that there is an anchor point where review and refinement might be a part of the planning process long term. And by creating a lot of those centralized resources have come directly from feedback we've solicited from building level co-leads. So that again is a building administrator and an educator co-lead that are learning together what it would mean to establish a guiding coalition of educators that hope to teach, model, monitor and support the PLC work at the building level. And so as we continue to tighten the collaborative process we engage in at a district guiding coalition level, the work we're trying to put in on the logistics side of things is in response directly to what we're hearing from principal and educator co-leads for elevating the building collaborative team perspective through their kind of intermediary role of sort. And so the Jim alluded to the fact that earlier today, in fact, we had an opportunity to co-facilitate a session alongside Dan Kohan, one of our colleagues we've been collaborating with from Solution Tree, to really fortify what it is to what it is to operate in this collaborative fashion. What sort of characteristics and skills are you looking for in other guiding coalition team members? And once you are able to establish the guiding coalition, then how you can streamline your work in in a structured way that is also responsive to the input and data that is collected from collaborative teaching teams. And so as far as the year one implementation goes of training for guiding coalitions, we just completed our fifth of six, excuse me, trainings this school year with our principal co-leads and educator co-leads around the foundational components of a guiding coalition. And we're starting to dive a little bit deeper into essential standards and the guaranteed and viable curriculum component. But we went through a very collaborative process for folks to identify the educator co-lead. Again, soliciting staff input from a building to determine who that might be in collaboration with the building principal and released today to co-leads was a similar collaborative process for the two of them to bring back to their building in order to solicit staff input and nominations to establish additional contributors to their guiding coalition. So this has been a top-down mandate. It's not an admin-only decision-making process. Principals and co-leads have worked really meaningfully and authentically side by side from the get-go in this year one's launch and will continue to model that practice as they fold in new guiding coalition members as this process rolls out as well. If you could jump to the next slide, thanks, Jeff. So a couple of the to-dos specific to the district level guiding coalition were referenced on the previous slide, but some of it comes down to establishing that playbook and hub as that central resource point for guiding coalitions and teacher teams alike to be able to access more easily what work has already been done and continue adding as new work is established to a central location. But just as we are asking teacher teams to engage in cycles of inquiry that revolve around the four questions of what do we want students to know and learn? How are we going to know if they've learned it? How are we going to respond if they don't yet? And how are we going to extend if they do? Some of the tightening that we are recognizing for our guiding coalition at the district level is to engage in our own form of that cycle of inquiry as to what we want guiding coalitions to know and do and how will we know that they have learned it? And if they need a response with additional supports, how might we accommodate that? If they're ready and rear into go, then how might we better extend opportunities for them to carry that work forward? Again, with the intention of teaching how to do guiding coalitions, but also modeling that cycle of inquiry process that they would engage in at a building level and obviously collaborative teams at the teacher level would be engaged in as well. And then we've received some very direct input from co-leads based on conversations back at their buildings as to what supports and structured structures would be most meaningful to carry this work forward. If we're going to get PLCs right, what are we going to need to do? And what do they need from district level guiding coalition and what do we need from the superintendent and school board level in order to carry this work forward? So the kind of three buckets that we have sussed out from co-lead input are essentially framed in the forum of asks for y'all to consider. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to communicate up to your level of the system and then would certainly be open to comments and questions to follow as well. But just the four question cycle of inquiry that we have standardized for what is traditionally been considered PLC work at the collaborative team level, working your way through and through those four questions around student data is not easily or authentically accomplished in a 40-minute chunk of time on a weekly basis. And so there's a pretty consistent ask from co-leads and from staff at building level for more than 40 minutes a week to engage in that cycle of inquiry process. And would love to collaborate with school board directors, superintendent level and other district decision makers around how we might be able to establish a embedded time for that meaningful work to take place in a more authentic and extended way than what we've been able to accomplish thus far in just 40-minute chunks at a time. Beyond the cycle of inquiry, some of what we'll be digging more deeply into under the guaranteed and viable curriculum realm is not just a matter of identifying essential standards and establishing a scope and sequence, but it requires a far more robust process for teacher teams and individual teachers to get intimately familiar with standards in a way that allows them to unpack them, determine what most meaningful learning targets are sussed out from them, do some collaborative planning around units that either help cross curricular areas or help us ensure that we're incorporating the essential standards that have been identified, collaborative time around establishing the common formative assessments that allow us to monitor student progress towards those standards and then addressing what intervention and enrichment experiences for students might look like. All also require time and part of why we might not be as far along in that work comes back to that same original concern around not having enough time in just the 40-minute chunk that we have available on a weekly basis. And so there's been consideration and suggestion around some embedded collaborative time over the course of a given school year where teacher teams can engage in extended collaborative time around those very pieces that will help fortify the cycle of inquiry that's engaged in on a weekly basis, but that helps dig a little bit deeper into a more robust plan for addressing student learning needs. So beyond wanting or needing more than 40 minutes on a weekly basis and looking for other embedded times for collaboration over the course of a given school year, one of the newest components to our PLC exploration that is intended to help monitor and support PLC work at a building level is through the establishment of a guiding coalition at each building. And so it's been meaningful and there's been gratitude expressed for some of the shared learning experience co-leads have experienced this school year, but recognizing that they'll be bringing on additional guiding coalition members for the 23, 24 school year. Their role as a building guiding coalition is to teach PLC teams, model the collaborative process and then help to monitor and support the PLC work across content areas and/or grade levels. And in order to do that, they will also need dedicated staff time, especially for the teaching and modeling component. But in order to meaningfully monitor and support PLCs, they will also need shared time available to collaborate around building specific needs. And as our current schedule exists, that time isn't present. And so if we are asking more of folks seeking again opportunities for embedded collaborative time at a guiding coalition level is some of what we're hearing. And I guess the, the three asks for both more than 40 minutes for teacher team collaboration, ongoing planning collaboration in alignment with the cycle of inquiry and then an opportunity for guiding coalition members to collaborate. Time was an emphasis, recognizing that finances are finite, so too is time. And so wanting to be cognizant of workload impacts. The emphasis from co-lead input and from building-based input has been more so around time as opposed to additional compensation for hours outside of the contract day, for example. I realize neither are easy to enact with, you know, just a flick of a wand, but I appreciate your willingness to hear input that we've solicited from building level representation and then hope that we might be able to collaboratively problem solve around what that time structure feasibility might look like moving forward.
Questions, thoughts? Wow them.
Carrie, Carrie, you got a lot in, girl. I'm super impressed. So yeah, I think we're going to have to really like throw out the concept of how we organize time a little bit and be really out of the box thinkers about how we can do that. Because there's just no way, even in the little bit of PLC work we tried to do several years ago, that 40 minutes was enough to like get everything out organized, start talking and then somebody always joined in later. And you know, it's just, once we get the the way things are supposed to go, that will be less of an issue, but 40 minutes is, you just get started on like doing the work and then 40 minutes is over. So yeah, we're going to really have to be out of the box thinkers. Because yeah, we don't have that magic wand. Wouldn't it be nice? I want that all the time.
I'm just going to like reiterate what Kathy just said because, I mean, I think we can get creative and figure something out. I mean, if you don't have a consistent amount of, a consistent and enough time, both consistent and enough, there's really no point in doing PLCs, frankly. The work just isn't as, as quality and it's not as valuable. You're not getting anywhere near out what you need to get out of it. So, you know, I absolutely understand and, and agree that I think it's important we figure a solution out to that so that we can get teachers more time. I, the, if I understood correctly, the three asks for more time for those, for the collaboration teams, which is what they get 40 minutes right now, right on Mondays. And then you also are looking for an opportunity for, I hear you correctly, guiding coalition members to meet together and collaborate? Okay. All right. Thank you.
And one, if I can add, there was a third.
So I got, I got that. I was just, I was clarifying the two, the differences between the collaboration teams and the guiding coalition. I got the third one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one more and that's about the hub idea, which is marvelous, but definitely will require like somebody to oversee it. Because we, I mean, we had something like that became the, like the black box where all of these ideas went before and there were things there from, I don't know, just as soon as we had computers, you know, from the 90s, which is back in my day. But yeah, we'll need to make sure that there's somebody who's responsible for curating it, which is also a task because otherwise it just becomes this black box of ideas with nobody able to really access them.
Kathy, that's such a great ad. If I may, we do have a member of the IT team on our district level guiding coalition and that's why to be able to pull that in, we have a member of the PD or PL team on that team curriculum instruction because it's going to take all of us if we're going to be all in on this process. Great ad. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, I will keep us moving then. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Carrie, joining us. Next up is Brett with a budget update.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Snell. I'll try to be quick. I know we got a lot to cover tonight. So just wanted to check in on a couple of things specifically as it relates to enrollment. As you can kind of see from our, the black fonted items are the kind of the overall budget timeline that we shared with you and kind of tried to use as our roadmap through this process. So as we sit in March, there's a few enrollment items that I think are worthy of discussion. The first one, thank you, Dr. Snell, for popping that up. We certainly have gotten a fair share of questions around why is what's happening in Evergreen happening and why isn't it happening here? And it's a complicated question with a lot of different factors, but one of the main ones we can point to is part of the enrollment discussion that we want to have. And so this particular table shows all of our Clark County districts and the first two columns of data are comparing kind of the last year before the pandemic and then what happened immediately after we returned to school when we were in hybrid and remote only. So that's kind of the initial loss due to the pandemic is quantified in that kind of middle column there. You can see that with the exception of Ridgefield, which obviously has a lot of new housing growth that muted the pandemic impact, most of the county was pretty tightly packed around 5 to 10% and us in Evergreen were very tightly packed around, you know, within a quarter of, or three quarters of a percent of one another. So if we, again, we kind of marched from, okay, the, the immediate shock and awe of the pandemic has caused a decrease in enrollment. Now what's happened since then? And so the next column over is 22, 23, and that's only through January. So you might hear some different numbers from Evergreen if they're using projections. We are using So you might hear some different numbers from Evergreen if they're using projections. We are using different projections. But I didn't have access to all of that for the other districts, so I just locked in on year to date through January. And you can see a very different, um, we've had very different paths since the initial um return to. Um, some semblance of education after the pandemic. Um, Evergreens continued to lose enrollment where we've not rebounded dramatically, but we've seen at least a slight return. Of our enrollment. Um, and again, Evergreens is exact, has been exacerbated. Um, obviously, there's some other stories around the other districts, but I think that's the main one Evergreen, or excuse me, Ridgefield continues to grow, grow, grow. Um, as they have classes in wrestling rooms and gymnasiums and anywhere else they can put um.
Yeah, it's a sub in Ridgefield. I can tell you it's. All open spaces available. Yes, sir. So.
So they have their own challenges, not necessarily on the operating side because of the enrollment growth, but on the capacity side. Um, so anyway, that's that's the main, one of the main differences. And then as you all, I think are aware. Um, we are in a better position from a fund balance perspective, which allows us to kind of um. Be measured, a little bit more measured in how we're approaching the next few years. And we talked about kind of a stair step approach where they really don't have as much of that flexibility. Um, so just wanted to highlight those kind of differences as to why we're having. Slightly different or hopefully much different conversations, but um than Evergreen. The the second uh table is just our own enrollment forecast and kind of looking at it through a historic lens. Um, as you guys know, the first part of our budget cycle is forecasting enrollment because number one, that drives our revenue, but also drives some of our staffing needs. There's a lot of information here, so I'll try to just highlight a couple key points that I think hopefully make a little bit of sense, or at least provide context to why. We're we're not necessarily going to see massive rebounds of our enrollment from this point forward. Um, one of them is the kind of the greenish highlighted um grades. What I tried to do is show those three cohorts as they've matriculated through the system through the years. And why those three grades were highlighted starting in two thousand nineteen, twenty is those were our last three cohorts that were over eighteen hundred students. Um, and so a couple of things have happened, as you know, are in. Incoming enrollment, uh, our kindergarten cohorts have been lower and lower for several years. Um, and then also what's compounding that is we look at the forecast for twenty-three, twenty-four. Is these last, in essence, larger cohorts or the previous normal cohorts. They've now landed in high school as we're forecasting the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year or school year. And what we know is and when those any cohort gets to high school, we start to uh see losses to running start and Cascadia Tech Academy. Um, and other programming that that meets the students' needs and they have the flexibility to take advantage of a lot of different opportunities there. Um, and so it's kind of double um. Uh, of double challenging as we have lower and lower kindergarten cohorts coming in and the demographer study that we commissioned. Suggests that birth rates are just now likely to start ticking up, which means we won't see it for about five years. Um, larger co kindergarten cohorts, hopefully. Um, and then again, as those bigger classes push into the high school, we see the normal attrition of those competing programs. So um, again, we're in a better position than Evergreen, but we're by no means back into growth mode. And so I just wanted to anchor that as we start the budget piece. Um, we have, we have the same challenges as many districts around Essercliffs and everything else and our enrollment slightly better, but it's certainly not. Um, what we would like it at least from a finance and and revenue generation perspective. I'll pause for any questions at that point.
Thanks. So Brett, um, as I recall, pre-pandemic, we had a demographer who also was predicting that our enrollments. Were going down because the birth rate was going down. We're becoming an older community and. Um, I took a look at some of those numbers a a week or two ago, so it's not really fresh, but it looks like our. Numbers aren't that different at this moment, even pre-pandemic than what. The demographer was predicting before we had the pandemic. It's sort of like we're on the right track. It's like the pandemic kind of. Messed with us for a little bit, but we seem to be falling back to where we had expected to be.
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement. What I would say is if we kind of think about the uh, the birth rate being kind of this um. Inverted bell curve kind of a thing. I I think the original demographic study that we had several years ago, I think they thought the bottom of that. Curve was gonna be about now and 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 maybe even a couple of years ago and we would start to slowly start ticking up in a few years. I think the most recent version is just push that out just a year, maybe two or three years is also, I think, but the trend is very much. Um, I think the trends are very much aligned.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett. We'll um be coming back. Uh, the legislature uh did release the House and Senate budget this week and so. Um, a lot of analysts looking at those and trying to make projections often um. In our legislative call today, even Brett was, you know, trying to interpret policy and then typically there'll be a reports on what does that policy. Implication mean for our special education funding or our levy equalization funding. So it takes a few days usually after the budgets are released to predict that. And then, of course, it doesn't really matter what's in the Senate budget or the House budget. It matters what's in the end budget that's approved, so. All right, uh, next up we have uh Kirsten and I see Michael is on here as well for um a professional learning update to the board.
Good evening, directors. Uh, this year, professional learning has tracked two professional learning outcomes for the Board of Directors. Uh, the first, I will intentionally plan, instruct and assess. So that students have multiple means to access, represent and express their learning. In our professional learning uh system, um, this translated to um this training modeled. Engagement strategies that impact students' engagement, achievement and variability. Eighty-eight percent of participants either agreed or strongly agreed with this statement. Over the next three years, professional learning will intentionally focus on the three guiding principles of universal design for learning. Beginning next school year with principle one, engagement. We will intentionally design and facilitate learning experiences that model. The guidelines of engagement by recruiting interests, sustaining effort and persistence. And providing opportunities for self-reflection or excuse me, self-regulation and reflection for our staff members. Professional Learning Department will increase the knowledge base. Of administrators, instructional coaches, specialists and facilitators and the principles of UDL through strategic training opportunities. Establish implementation partnerships with regional districts and national organizations engaged in universal design implementation. And provide job embedded training that is student centered, relevant to classroom teachers and focused on engagement and achievement outcomes. The second uh professional learning outcome. Was I will intentionally foster environments that enhance a sense of belonging by honoring students' perspectives. And experiences related to race, class, gender, culture and ability as I create and support learning opportunities. This alignment with our survey um was that uh this training included activities and collaboration which fostered my sense of belonging and inclusion. Eighty-nine percent of our participants either agreed or strongly agreed with this statement. Over the next three to five years, the Professional uh Learning Department will continue to support the development of inclusive learning spaces by. Providing learning opportunities that support social emotional learning as well as classroom climate and culture. School-wide culture and practices, authentic partnerships with families and caregivers. And align learning opportunities with our community partners. Will also provide job embedded professional learning opportunities that model the competencies in Castle's framework, including. Self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills. And responsible decision-making, along with Washington State SEL standards. Are there any questions for Professional Learning Department?
Kirsten, can you just give a um, a couple of samples of different activities where this data was collected from? Um, what types of experiences did teachers have?
Sure, over the last year, teachers had an oper- um, had opportunities to participate. In our communities of practice that occurred in August as well as the statewide in-service uh training date in October. Um, and then regular PD opportunities offered throughout the year where teachers were able to um. Access um both district directed and um they're accessing their own professional development funds to uh take trainings throughout the year.
Thanks, Kirsten. Any other questions or comments for professional learning?
Yeah.
Like everybody, it's a busy time as they're wrapping up this year's um experiences and then. Uh, looking ahead to next year. So I know that there's gonna be some communication going out in the near future to our certificated staff about some of those opportunities. And then um also to our classified staff with different kinds of opportunities um as well. So. Uh, just want to acknowledge that uh Michael is on this call and has provided a lot of great leadership to professional learning and uh. Um, she's also transitioning to another um phase of her career into retirement. So congratulations.
Congratulations, Michael. Thank you all so very much. I appreciate that. I'm gonna miss your southern draw though.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna miss all of you.
Oh, no, you won't. So a bit.
All right, well, I'll keep us moving. Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Kirsten. Um, we have a highly capable update. I know the board has um received some more frequent updates than like professional learning on highly capable because of the. Um, direction to us to launch a committee um to look at um some programming options and. We're getting very close to the point where we have those recommendations to you and would like to share some of those this evening. And so. Christie is on the call, Christine Lindholm, and I think I'll turn it over to her.
Thanks, Dr. Still. Good evening, everybody. You guys have heard an awful lot about our work and so hopefully tonight we can give you a real clear sense of. Where we think we've landed and what we'd like to highlight as possible um. Buckets of work, let's call them for next year. So to start with, just re-highlighting our belief statement that we used with the committee. To develop a continuum of services guided by student ability and achievement data. And that we're all equitable, feasible and sustainable. So that that was our platform we jumped off of. And then we looked at this last time, we changed the colors because we don't want you to get bored. Yeah. Um, but this, this is our service continuum that we're proposing before I think I explained that we have have. We weren't quite sure how the continuum would look, but what we decided was that really there are a whole bunch of things that need to happen in in every gen ed classroom. Where high cap kids are identified. And things that might happen also in a self-contained model. So sort of flipping the current model where most of the high cap activities take place now. In a self-contained classroom. And we were hard pressed to say as a district, what exactly happens in a gen ed classroom. We couldn't say with consistency what that was. So moving towards most identified high cap kids will thrive in a gen ed classroom. With these service options and they go from highest um, most general rather to than to most specific. And for those kids who are not thriving in that gen ed setting, what more intensive support might we offer them? So that's the premise that we're working off of. So then what I want to talk to you about tonight is what we're hoping to lift off the ground for next year specifically. So these were our next steps. We, I took off the one that said we were gonna have our final meeting with the advisory committee because we did do that. We are still looking primarily at at teacher professional learning and development. Through the lens of universal design. A few pilots and a couple of new um augmented. Portions of our program of our existing high cap program. So that's what I'm gonna walk you through next. So next slide. Oh, I didn't remember to tell you this. The team put together this really cool infographic. It's very big kind of poster-y, so it didn't fit on here, but you can click on that and see, I think it clearly. Identifies how we're hoping to work with what are the pieces of identification and what are the pieces of services? Services are what we really worked on with the committee, but the team has also been simultaneously working on and doing a better job of how we identify kids and how we talk about it. So this is a just a graphic representation of what I'm gonna talk about. I have hard copies for you and I'll send them out, but if you keep this in your head. As we talk, then I think it'll make sense. Okay, the first big change is to the self-contained program. When we last spoke, we weren't sure how we wanted to address this. We weren't sure if we had enough. Um, time to thoughtfully do it. We have enough qualifying students. We have since discovered we absolutely do have enough qualifying students. So rather than call it self-contained because that that had other connotations to special education and um. Frankly, a model that we're trying to move ourselves out of as we become a more inclusive district. We thought we would try on a title like intensive high cap support class. And this would be for those children who would be identified this next current year through achievement testing through the I-ready process, for example. At the ninety-five plus percentile, so really high, high academic achievers. So that we can collect enough kids to try out two new classrooms. It would be a multi-age setting, third through fifth grade. We'd like to do two classrooms worth of students so that there's some opportunities for collaboration between the the students and the teachers. And then we need a place to put them, uh, a house for them. And then that would entail phasing out the current self-contained models at both Eisenhower and Truman. So that next year would just be fourth and fifth. We wouldn't add a third grade because we'd be doing third, fourth and fifth in this new model. Over time, we would add to the identification process, not just the achievement. But also the using the nagliary to look at ability as well. So we're really looking kind of for those outlier kids again that we don't think would. Thrive in agenda and setting where that we wouldn't be able to differentiate enough for them to meet their needs. So that's the first big change we want to lift off the ground and that will probably take quite a lot of work right up front from now until that time because we'll need to. Identify them, communicate with their families, help families understand what we're offering, get. Get the kids in the program, find the space, get the teachers, all that stuff. So that's probably our biggest piece of next work. And then our next one. Is really the ongoing, just like Kirsten just talked about with the his description of universal design for learning, we would be partnering with curriculum and instruction and professional learning. To do a district-wide rollout of universal design for learning. And we would do some specific professional learning for everybody around high cap. It would, it seems that there's a lot of room for growth in terms of how we understand. Who is a high cap kid? What what might their profiles look like? How might those different kids in those profiles need to be served? How do we better prepare ourselves to do the job better? Um, and so there'll be some required trainings as well as some optional trainings, but that's a big piece of the work and and. Probably our biggest ongoing thing that we'll need to provide is steady. Coaching, um, that's the other thing that the coaching piece is we're restructuring our instructional coaches. We're funding them partially from the high cap budget so that. These coaches can now go into schools and work with all teachers to not only teach them about high cap kids and the strategies to serve them well, but they'll be, that'll be part of their. Um, coaching cycles that they're working on with teachers. Next slide. We mentioned in the next steps, finding a couple of pilot schools. The thing we most are eager to pilot next year is clustering. So that includes, it it could be not just high cap kids, but we might cluster for a variety of things so that teachers. In different grade levels can specialize in the kinds of experiences they're offering for the kids in their class. We're currently investigating the research around how best to do this. What would it look like? We need to get that information to schools. Next year, we really want to focus on early adopters. There's a lot of research out there in the in the education and the business world on. Leveraging the early adopters to get your whole movement off the ground. So if we can focus on those people who are super interested, eager to try it. help them, and then others will come along as they see the success and see the support that those people are getting. So that's probably our biggest gen ed piece next year besides the professional learning opportunities for staff. Next. We want to continue academic competitions because not only are they great for high cap kids, they're very inclusive and all kids can compete in, in whatever they're interested in. We were looking, we've just finished a series of Math is Cool competitions. And now, now we have the great problem of deciding how do we get elementary kids to a five-hour away tournament that requires some overnight and creative thinking with their parents. So we had sort of a runaway win with the HOC team and they nailed it. It was really cool. Now we got to figure out this other piece. So Josh worked really hard on, on getting that together and that's been a fun thing, but adding Battle of the Books, chess, other things that we know often appeal to high cap kids, but also appeal to a lot of kids so that we're not isolating them and operating these experiences.
When you offer these experiences to everyone, then it's an opportunity for some socializing amongst high cap, non-high cap in, in kind of their space.
Yeah, and it gives lots of other kids an, an opportunity to try out something that maybe they didn't think of before and find their strengths in, in a new way. So this is less about what's going to happen in schools and more about what we're going to do as a team in the district. And we've been talking about this universal screening. And this is using the Naglieri. It's an ability test essentially, and there's a little bit of write-up under that column. It's, it's a non-verbal, so it is, it increases the opportunities for kids who don't, who have English as a primary language. It looks at kids' ability to reason and think and actually looks for neurodiversity. So it will help us better identify kids, especially those kids at the far end of the range who, who may need something more than what happens in a gen ed classroom. We're looking at this, some of our initial research even without the Naglieri is we're finding lots of kids who are really high in their achievement through iReady, but also have IEPs, which is what we predicted. So we want to make sure and capture those kids and see what, what kind of services can we provide for them to better meet their needs. But the universal screening idea is something that many, many districts are doing and the idea is that you're not missing any kids and you're not relying on just one, one measure to find them. This would give everybody the opportunity and we would have other ways of looking to. We'd still look at kids' performance. We'd still look at teacher and parent recommendations. There's a, a pretty wide variety of ways that we would try and understand which kids need to be identified and how we could serve them in a program. Want to get this off the ground. We're looking at doing this this year with just a group of dual-language kids actually to test it out. It's a finite pocket of kids that we can get to this year. We want to see how the language issue works with it. We haven't quite determined that yet, but that's what's in the works. And going forward, we're looking at having a universal screening opportunity for everybody in second grade, we think. Next year, we might try and catch kids in fifth grade as well, so we didn't miss anybody if they're already well out of the second grade range, but.
So you'll, in 23, 24, so next year, you'll test everybody in the second grade is, and then in the spring and then the, but the fifth graders in the fall, but then year after year, will you test new kids that come in, like if there's a third grader or a fourth grader?
Yes, if they hadn't had any prior screening that we could dig up, then we would include them in the next round of testing. There's quite a lot. We, this would be done in classrooms. So this is another thing that we need to teach teachers about. It is computerized. You give it to everybody all at once, but teachers need to learn how to do it too.
In my, one of my former school districts, second graders, that this is what they did for identifying, they didn't call them high cap, but for identifying high kit cap, make sure that everybody was had the equal opportunity. Everybody took whatever their assessment was in second grade. Because they offered a pull-out program in third grade. Yeah. So I think it's great that everybody's going to do it.
Yes, I think it'll provide more transparency and then just better understanding for us as a team to what the needs are.
You kind of answered my question, but you mentioned it's, it's computerized. And so like, everybody is kind of just taking it all at once. That was, I was kind of trying to figure out how it was going to be administered. And so is it, I know, like, for example, because I mean, iReady is computerized and some, and there's things built in, you know, students that kind of, you know, click through. Are there, you know, click through fast? So there's like ways that, you know, track, you know, kind of their response pattern was, was odd, or, you know, sometimes some students just taking a computerized test independently versus is there, are there alternate options or accommodations for students that maybe that's not the best way to measure? If we don't think that's going to be accurate or?
Yeah, we would need to follow whatever accommodations a, a child is entitled to for sure. I don't know enough about it to answer you specifically. I know our team is listening to, to us talk. I'm sure they're taking notes, so we will be able to answer those questions as we encounter them.
And then you mentioned it's equitable for multilingual students and you mentioned, you know, kind of trying it out with some of our dual language. So is the test, I mean, you just said it's culturally appropriate, but is it in Spanish or are there other languages that are available? Because I know it's a lot of analogies or pictures, but I assume there's some sort of directions or, I don't know, like verbal, you know, quite like you, like the question, which doesn't belong, you know, is that prompt provided in multiple languages or? Do you know anything else about?
I wish I had investigated it more. I don't know the answer to that, but I believe that, that is part of the teacher training would be how to give the test and how to, how to practice, how to ask the questions, kind of like what we used to do for, before we had SBA. We'd have to read it and everybody would answer it and y'all had to say the same thing, that kind of thing. And so I can find out more about that though. I think there's one.
Yeah. Sorry. Oh, I have, I guess I'm, can we go back to the last, last slide? I had a question. Um, the, I understand the assessment calendar, but is this for everyone, for all high cap students, right? In terms of identifying who would be receiving high cap services, or is this just for the, I can't remember your new name for the self-contained, can you?
Intensive.
Intensive.
Support, yeah.
Is this the assessment calendar here, fifth in the fall, second grade in the spring? Is this for all high cap students to identify, like, capture them all? Or is this just for the intensive?
This is, this is for all students in the district. So it would be universal for every second grader. And to catch fifth graders in the fall that maybe we should have caught that weren't already identified as high cap. So it's not necessarily looking, we're not using this to look and see right now who should go in the intensive high cap support class, but rather who should be identified as a high cap student. For students who are already identified right now, because we don't have the Naglieri in place, we're primarily looking at achievement scores. So kids who are scoring off the charts and we also know something about them, maybe they already have an IEP or their teacher would recommend or their parents would recommend.
Okay, so that was my, my follow-up question. Then for those students, for the intensive.
High cap support.
Um, we're using just the data we already have collected on those students then for next.
Yes.
Okay.
The one, I'm not sure if this is the last slide, if there's one more after this, but the other part of what we'd like to start doing next year is called talent identification, which is what a lot of districts in Washington are doing. Rather than identifying our youngest learners, because we know how variable they come to us, where some are already reading and doing all kinds of things and others really need that time in school to fully blossom. We want to have sort of a talent watch list of kids that we, that are testing high, that appear to do things fairly easily that fit some of our profiles that we're looking at. And have them on a watch list, let their parents know, hey, did you know this about your child? Here's how they perform. We're kind of watching them to see if they'll qualify for high cap down the road. Then we would be, we'd have these lists and just have teachers and parents aware. And then we would do our screening in second grade to see this, this whole process is really to make sure we're not missing anybody. Right now, we're, we're not positive. We've got everybody that we should have identified. Do I have one more slide, Jeff, or was that it?
That was.
That was it.
Yeah. Awesome. Make sure if there are any questions or comments.
Actually, do you have one more question? You mentioned that for, for, I want to make sure I understand, for next year, we're looking at creating these two intensive high cap support classes.
You got it.
Um, and we're still trying to figure out like where that would be placed and. Um, but you also mentioned piloting clusters in some schools. Um, last year, when we kind of were looking at the idea of clustering, one of my concerns was that in some schools that would be very easy and in other schools it would be almost impossible because you just don't have the numbers in, in smaller schools or in certain grade bands or whatnot. Um, so my question is, are we looking at, actually at piloting clusters? Is there any other types of services that we're looking at piloting for those schools or clustering want to even be, even be a possibility? Like pull-out services or something like that?
Pull-out services are on our continuum of services, although not, we don't want that to be the primary thing because we're trying to keep kids in community. What I would say about the some schools don't have enough kids, I think because we're using a local norming factor, we are able to identify kids at one school. Let's say that the achievement rate of students, maybe they're not scoring in the 95th percentile, but a kid is scoring in the 86th percentile. And for that school, that is the 95th or 98th percentile for that school population. We can identify kids that way also. So we would be using that model, local norming, to still find kids who would benefit from, from some clustering. So that there, and a lot of it certainly is for kids, but I, I anticipate that it's going to make it a little bit uh, more streamlined for, for teachers as well to plan for a group of kids who may learn in a more similar manner.
And Christie, are you also thinking, I know we talked about the the intensive program being multi-age in some of these situations where there might not be a like a full cluster of fourth graders, perhaps clustering like third, fourth, and fifth grade, you know, doing a multi-age of clusters?
It, that is definitely a possibility. We actually took multi-age off of this service continuum for this particular presentation.
You know how I like it.
I know, I do too. We, we found some research that indicated that it may not be fabulous for all groups of kids. And so we wanted to understand it better. To see, you know, who is it really benefiting? We wouldn't want to implement something that further advantaged one group that may already have a lot of advantages, but didn't pick up the pace for other kids. So that's a little bit on pause as we try and figure out we know the rest of it.
While I didn't like the fact that you pulled multi-age, I love the answer you should be. I love that you looked at the research. I love it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, the team is really on it. They're really looking at ways to, to help out teachers, make this change and to communicate better with families and, and really give the service to our kids that they need. So.
Doing the right thing. Yeah.
Been great. All right. Then the next step I think is to get you this in, in the form of a proposal. And we'll be communicating with the high cap advisory committee to let them know that this is what we brought to you. They may be watching now, but we want them to be fully informed too. So thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time.
All right. About an hour in, so hope you're hanging in there. We have a couple of bigger sections in terms of slides anyway. And so the next is our spring progress monitoring. This was referenced earlier in June and Carrie's PLC presentation is our quarter part, quarterly progress monitoring. And I'm going to share some information with you and Janelle Ephraim as well. We'll share some information. And like we have done in the first two presentations, we'll focus on student belonging and then we'll also focus on academic progress. In general, we're trying to address the question, how are our students doing? And having that at the board level through the equity policy, we think orients the system and creates a cadence to looking at this information because ultimately this is the focus of all of our work that we want to know how our students are doing and what we can do to help improve their experience and it'll help improve their learning. And so tonight, to begin with, we're going to start with a sense of belonging. And we're going to look at panorama survey data, attendance data and exclusionary data. Some of this data, some of you have already seen because you serve on like the Equity Advisory Council. So that some, for some of this will be new. And also this presentation today is, it was informed by your questions in the winter presentation. So some of the panorama data, although we don't have the next spring cycle, we're going a little deeper with the winter and breaking that out by grade level and group as requested by the board. So also referenced in the PLC work was this arrow where we've been trying to orient all of our work. Thinking about kind of two lanes that lead towards student learning experiences. One is the experience that students have in the work of the equity policy and thinking about inclusionary opportunities for kids in the classroom, making sure that they feel connected and that they have high access and benefit. And then the second lane is around we, how we collaborate professionally. And how do we utilize the information that we have to make good instructional decisions for our students? Specifically, also in, under the culture and climate goal, our student advisory committee established activities related to students' sense of belonging. And as they reported in our last board meeting, they will be having a student leadership summit coming up in April, April 26th. And so I wanted to call attention that there's a strong goal alignment between what we're sharing with you back to the equity policy and the board level goals. So just, um, some of these slides are the same things that we showed you in the past. So just to orient you, I won't spend a lot of time on these, but we are focused on indicators that reflect a sense of belonging and there's different questions that surface that we've asked students related to that. At this point, I think I'm going to turn it over to Janelle to give more specifics of where we were at and where we're at now.
All right. Thank you and hello again. And really, I just want to share an update with you regarding some data points that help us to measure our student belonging. You know what our panorama survey is, I won't get into the explanation around that. But basically the data points that we're going to be looking at is our panorama results for our elementary age students as well as our secondary. So in these, uh, the slide that you have here, it basically will provide an overview of how well our, our students are feeling valued in our schools. So based on feedback from approximately 4,000 students in third through fourth grade, excuse me, third through fifth grade, 65% of our elementary students feel like they belong and are valued members of our community. This year is slightly down from the fall. Uh, or excuse me, this current data point is slightly down from the fall. We're 66% of our students in the fall experienced belonging in our schools and currently, of course, we're at 65%. While this is slightly down, oh, just wanted to say one more, no, one more thing about that 65%, while this is slightly down, it is in the 80th percentile of the national ranking. And so it's above the national average when you look at elementary age students across our country. Right, next slide. So in reviewing our secondary results, we, we do see that there is a 25-point decline when compared to our elementary school students. And, but just under 8,000 of our sixth through 12th grade students provided feedback that revealed this 40%, that 40% of our students are feeling valued like they're valued members in our community. And this number is consistent with the fall where we were at 40%. And it is an increase from last year's 38%. And I know Jeff already mentioned that we wanted to go deeper into this data per your request. And so the next few slides, we're going to look deeper into our data for our sixth through 12th graders. So these are the questions that were asked. These are the five questions that were asked to get us to the 40% data point. The first question was, how well do people understand you as a person? So 43% of our students responded favorably. So forty three percent of our students uh, uh, responded favorably to that. And uh, this was an increase uh, from the fall and the fall uh, data point was forty five percent. Now, the next question, how connected do you feel to adults at your school? And that this was um, of course disheartening where we had thirty two percent of our students who responded favorably. Uh, to this question, um, this does, this data point does help us uh, as we. Um, look at ways that we can uh, respond to student needs in our system and we'll talk a little bit uh, more about that a little later. Uh, this next question, um. How much respect do students in your school show you? So forty four percent of our students responded favorably favorably to this one. And uh, this is an example, I think that um, uh, that our students um, um, are. Um, learning what we're teaching when we talk about uh, being safe, responsible and and respectful. Um, it's at our um, um, in our in our spaces and um. Because our students are feeling like uh, they're feeling more safe with their peers at this point. Okay, and the next question was, um, how much do you matter to others at your school? Well, thirty six percent of our students responded favorably to this and this was uh, by uh, two percent from the fall as well. Does provide some evidence uh, that our students um, are are struggling. Um, in the area of being connected to some adults, um, but I do want to, that last question, um. Jeff, if you don't mind going back to that lot, yep, thank you. The last question, um, uh, that I believe is overall encouraging. Is how do you feel like you belong at your school? So when students are asked the question directly. Um, the rate is higher at uh, forty seven percent of our students um, are saying that they feel like they belong. All right, uh, next slide please. Okay, uh, this slide uh, looks at um. Belonging or how our students are feeling valued by grade level. Okay, and um, so going back to that original question, we see that forty seven percent. Of our sixth graders feel that like they're valued members of our community. Uh, unfortunately, we see a decline as students uh, increase in age. Uh, it does increase at the twelfth grade. At the twelfth grade year. And we know that there are um, various explanations to this uh, phenomenon as students become more independent and. And um, and more connected uh, with their peers as opposed uh, uh, as opposed to adults. Um, again, this is another data point that um, we are paying close attention to. Um, when we look at how we can um, respond better to our student needs. Okay, um, next slide, thank you. So when reviewing this breakdown by program, we find that thirty five percent of our students on five oh four plans feel like. They are valued members of their school. As opposed to the forty one percent uh, who do not have five oh four plans. Um, this has an inverse relationship when we look at students with I U Ps and who are eligible for special education services. Uh, forty two percent of those students um, feel like valued members of our community. As opposed to the forty percent of our students who do not um, receive special education services. Thank you. Looking at a further breakdown by program. Uh, we find that forty two percent of our students who uh, pay for lunch feel. Like they're valued as opposed to our thirty eight percent who qualify for free or reduced lunch. Um, we have clearly seen the impacts of poverty in our system and our community. And I think this data point is just another confirmation um, of um. Um, the work that um, where we can focus um, to ensure that all of our students are feeling. Like valued members of their of our community. And and will, we will continue to explore ways to uh, better support these students. Uh, next slide please.
Janelle, can you go back? What does the one, the other slide on the transfer status?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I missed that. So uh, the transfers, the transfer status, those are, that's for students who are moving. Uh, who have just moved into our system. And so that is, uh, oh, okay. We find that um, uh, once that thirty eight percent of our students who are moving into our system are. Are not immediately feeling um, like they belong. And so there's some work to do around. Um, how we can um, best incorporate students who are new to V P S. Okay, thank you. All right, so uh, this slide here um, looks at belonging across racial groups. And I know there's a lot of information on this slide. Um, because we have a lot of um, um, different ways that our students identify racially in our system. So uh, we see that thirty nine percent of our students who identify as Hispanic or Latinx. Feel valued in our, feel like valued members of our communities as opposed to the forty one percent. Um, in comparison, looking at this chart, um, students who are feeling valued most in our system. Our students who identify as a combination of Asian, black and white, and that's the sixty one percent. Um, of these students and um. Where we see um, the the lowest number is at twenty three percent. And uh, that particular uh, student group are students who identify as um, American Indian and black. And I'm. And I do want to pause to see if you have questions about that particular data points. I know there's a, there's a lot of uh, pieces of information there. Okay. Moving on to the next slide, thank you. So this flat final slide uh, represents our um, our English language learners. And so um, these are our, not just our students who are speaking uh, multiple languages, but our students who receive um, language services in our school. And uh, we see that uh, our E L Ls are uh, multilinguals who are receiving language services. Um, are experiencing belonging at um, higher rates than um. Than the average at forty percent. And so uh, that is uh, one of the things that um, you know, we do want to celebrate. And looking at the next slide please. We are, we will make some connections here between um, our uh, student discipline um, and our belonging. Our panorama data, so please keep that in mind as we work through this, through our discipline data. Um, but we do want to be able to share some successes and um, I see that Jeff is on that next slide. So I'm going to share. Um, what we see here. Um, so uh, this slide reviews exclusionary discipline by race and ethnicity. Um, exclusions that this data refers to are in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, emergency expulsions and expulsions. Um, the numbers on the graph represent the total number of days missed due to exclusionary discipline. For every one hundred students, okay? So this is you using a special algorithm. Um, um, our um, I T department um, uh, was able to uh, help us to compare the severity. Excuse me, the severity of exclusionary discipline across student groups. So these, so please keep in mind that these numbers don't necessarily represent the exact days, but it represents the numbers um. When putting them into an algorithm where we can compare them. Okay, so um, again, we've uh, focused efforts on reducing exclusionary discipline for students. Uh, when you look at the blue bar, it represents um. Uh, exclusionary discipline that is predicted for this year. And uh, when I say predicted, uh, we took um, exclusionary discipline rates for. At the ninetieth day of our of the school year this year back in January and we doubled those. Um, to give us a rate for um, the entire year. And so um, when you look at the blue, the blue represents this year, the red represents um, last school year. So the red bar represents last school year and we see a reduction in all of our student groups. And this, I think this is a uh, piece of information that we uh, certainly want to celebrate as we um. As we see a reduction, um, we see the largest percentage of reduction with our Native American student groups and our Pacific Islander students. Uh, the total number of days missed per one hundred students for Native American students. Went from seventy eight uh, last year to twenty one this year and for our Pacific Islander. The rate went from one hundred um, to um. Uh, from, excuse me, uh, the rate per one hundred went from ninety six last year to thirty eight this year. And I think that's important to highlight be, as um, we have um. Had specific focuses on on those particular groups and so we've seen some significant gains. Um, we do see a smaller reduction um, for when we compare our uh, black, Hispanic, two or more races. And our white students, uh, and those reductions are anywhere from five to twenty days uh, per student, per one hundred student. And um, I think, and you see there that um, our Asian, uh, the rates for our Asian students remain um, the same. Uh, next slide please. Okay, and so this slide shows a similar trend by program. Um, we see the reduction here as well with our student groups. We see the largest reduction for our students who are experiencing homelessness and that's a good thing. We're keeping those students at school. Um, the total number of days missed per one hundred students for homeless students um. Went from ninety three last year to thirty five this year. And with our uh, low income students, the rate uh, per one hundred went from forty seven to last year. Uh, to twenty eight this year. And um, looking at our students who receive special education services fifty three. Uh, uh, from fifty three last year to thirty seven this year. So we do see a smaller reduction in the rate when comparing our student groups who are, who have not historically experienced marginalization in our system. And those numbers um, did reduce anywhere from six to eleven days um, per one hundred students. You have any questions about that particular, those particular data points?
I have, I have some questions because I want to make sure I'm understanding this graph and the this. Um, these numbers correctly. Because I understand obviously the comparison of the blue lines to the red lines of last year versus this year. Um, and obviously you can see that each each category has decreased. Um, but because it's per one hundred students, I guess I'm trying to figure out. Can we, can we also compare categories to each other? Um, because like, for example, on this, on this slide, is it a correct? I I want to make sure I'm understanding the data. Is it correct to say, so this year the projected data shows? That. Special education, for example, like special education students are excluded more than students who are not in special education?
That's correct. Yes. Uh, yes, that's an accurate way to look at this chart.
Okay.
Sorry.
And on the pre, because on the previous one, I mean, it was showing and it, because I guess I just, when I think about population numbers. Um, and I'm uh. In just, uh, you know, I can't off the top of my head, you know, recite the district demographics as far as our. Um, um, you know, racial and ethnic profiles, but I know, for example, that there are population wise. There are way more non-special education students than there are special education students. So if special education students are getting excluded more than not special education. That's disproportionate. But then, and then in looking at at the previous slide. Um, it looks to me like, I think it was black and Pacific Islander are. Disciplined way excluded way more than other populated. I just want to make sure I'm under, I'm. That I'm reading this data because there there, it's. It's great that the numbers are down compared to last year, but it also just seems disproportionate if I'm interpreting.
As you are interpreting that, we are, we are still experiencing uh, disproportionality in student groups. Yes.
And if I might, Tracy, um. We went to this exclusion days per hundred students on um. Doctor Losens or Mister Losens suggestion because some of our populations are so small. Like the percentage, like Native Americans, let's say, we have like. At some point we had two percent, but we may have less, which makes it harder to compare. The.
Right, and that's why I was, that's why I was wanting to make sure that I was understanding it correctly because it's not. Total numbers, it's per one, and so is it per one hundred? Per one hundred A students or is it like per one, like, like the special education category, like? Per one hundred special education students, there are thirty seven.
That's correct.
So then you can't necessarily compare the categories because it's per per one hundred special education students. There are thirty seven exclusion days and per. Per one hundred non-special education, so you're comparing. I don't, I don't know, maybe I'm confusing myself or not representing because you're balancing it out by the hundred students. I don't know.
Yeah, and so the, so the algorithm that was used was intended to um, um. Intended to uh, create um, numbers so that we can compare different populations. Um, even though um, we may not have, um, obviously we don't have the number of special students who um, receive special education services. At the the same number of students who do not in our system. Uh, but they out, and I'm happy to uh, share the algorithm rhythm with you um, at a later time. Um, yeah, just so you can kind of see how um.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that my conclusion that I was drawing and comparing them is accurate.
So Tracy, like here on the special education, this is not special education. For every one hundred students in special ed, for every one hundred students we have in special ed. Um, thirty seven hours are being missed. They're being excluded thirty seven hours.
Thirty seven days, that's thirty seven.
Good, seven days, sorry, thirty seven days, sorry. Um, but for every one hundred. Non-special ed students, they're missing only sixteen days. So you can compare, and that's one of the reasons why he suggested we go to this was because that way you can draw like. A direct correlation for every one hundred of these students, these are the hours they're missing. It was hard to do it when we got smaller populations.
So you don't have to, so like I had said on the previous slide. You know, like you would want to know, you would want to know like the percentage of your, of your. V P S students who are black versus who are Asian versus who are Spanish, but you don't need to know that percentage. Because this balances it all out, so you can compare.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I think I have it.
Because it's hard, like if you only have.
Right.
Six Native American students in your whole district. And you've got one or two that are outliers that are skewing everything.
Yeah, no, I am, I understand that. I just want to make sure that my conclusions that I'm drawing are accurate based on how I'm interpreting this data. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and sorry for interrupting. I just, you know, haven't been in on it since the beginning. I understood what I was seeing, so. Sorry to know.
No, no apologies necessary. This is uh, and the dialogue is important, so want to make sure you all understand. Um, what we're sharing. Um, so um, thank you, Dr. Snell, for going to the next slide. Um, so one of the things, I mean, there's a, there's a few takeaways here. Yes, um, thank you uh, for noting we do. We, we are still experiencing disproportionality in our system. Um, and um, and in some groups we have um. Um, uh, narrowed that gap pretty significantly and others we are still, um, we're still working on. Um, some of the things that uh, this data does reveal is that uh, it appears as though our students who are receiving um. Um, who are connected to a caring adult who um, supports their like comprehensive school experience. Um, those students uh, we see are experiencing higher rates of belonging. Um, we saw, that was evidenced by what we saw with our E L Ls. Our um, our, excuse me, our multilinguals, uh, are uh, the students from third through fifth grade. Uh, even our students who um, are receiving special education services and our belonging da- data. Are reporting um, higher rates of experiencing belonging in our schools and so. And so, um, there's some, some through lines there uh around connect, connecting to um uh caring adults. Um, we do um also see a significant decrease in our Pacific Islander and our homeless um uh population students uh who are experiencing homelessness. And again, those are also areas that we have um targeted and um there are caring adults that are um specifically working with um those particular students. And so I think some of our takeaways is that uh we can, we can look in our system to see the things that are working well for kids. And um, and our goal is to uh continue to examine and, and apply some of those things that are working with um with students that are, are still um struggling to belong in our system. You have any questions?
Can I just highlight a school that's doing some, something neat at the elementary level for um making those connections, adult connections? So um I visited Truman. And um one of the things they noticed on their panorama was that the kids were not feeling that connection to the adults in the building, which is unusual at the elementary level. Usually that's, you know, it's a little bit higher, but again, it's three to five. So they get, they brainstormed a whole lot of ideas. And I think it's once every other month, they do a school-wide I don't want, know what to say, activity hour. And the teachers, all the adults in the building choose one activity that they want to share with the other kids. It could be a craft, it could be cooking, it could be learning about something, whatever they want to teach or share with the other kids. And for one day that month, uh, so for one hour, every other month, they have this special and I, I guess the day of belonging, I think, is what they call it, but the principal could share that better. And um the kids sign up for whatever activity they want to be a part of. And so they go and they spend, and they're smaller groups and they spend that time with that para or that teacher or that specialist learning how to make something or learning about space or whatever to make those special connections. And so I was just really impressed that they'd come up with that. So their day of belonging, I haven't been to one, but I'm going in May. It got me signed up. So I love to watch how some of our leaders are using this data to figure out, so there's, this is the hole that we have, so how do we fill it? So. Sorry to make it go a little bit longer, but I thought it was very important to share that.
Yes, thank you.
I just was, I guess, wondering, um I love that we're trying to look at it as a celebratory, right, but I think that we do have um small percentages of increases. But you know, we do have sixty percent of our students that do not feel like they belong. So I guess I'm just wondering, um out of the sixty, I guess, is there a certain area in our district that more of our students feel like they don't belong? I guess it's not that I want, that I want to point out like certain schools, but is it, I guess I'm just, maybe it is just um I guess I just want to know more about, is there a certain spacer area uh in our district that maybe it's not just about our district, but maybe it's more about the community? How can we also bring in our community partners and helping also work, do this work? But um, uh, that's just a question that I had. It's more about like the region or areas or um I guess pockets. Yeah, because I just, I was just jotting down that sixty percent of students don't feel like they belong. And then a, a lower percentage is our ninth grade students. And then from there, those who have fibroforeplants. And then from lower than that is those who are American Indian. So um, it's a very concerning to me, um, just for that particular group of students, right? So yeah, so I'm looking forward to hear about student belonging and how we're doing the work. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, um, Directors of Allah, and I, I um think the, the good thing about this data too is now that we're entering in our second full year of using the data. So we can start to look at trends and see how students are tracking through our system as cohorts. And are there pockets where students are feeling more, a greater sense of belonging? And why is that? Is it because of activities like Director Decker highlighted or things in the community that are going on? And so um sticking with this and consistently bringing it back at a board level is important. Um, and equally, if not more important, this is at the school level. Um, whether it's our students looking at the data or our classroom teachers or our principals to really decide like, how do we affect a positive change in this area? So um this time we looked at it from a grade level standpoint and an ethnicity and a program standpoint. We could also look at it across schools um and regionally and things of that nature too as we move forward.
Thank you.
So I'll take us into, and I'll maybe go a little quickly, um, uh, as I know we're um going a little longer than maybe we anticipated, um, but attendance is something that I'm going to keep bringing back to you. Um, and uh we are looking at it by month. And so basically, since the last time we met, we just have a, a February indicator. Um, and we're seeing a drop um from February to cross our groups um and kind of intersecting uh or at the same level as where we were at with our attendance last year. Um, and so our average attendance rate um are hovering at eighty eight point five percent for elementary, eighty seven point six percent for middle school, um, and eighty three point nine percent for high school. Probably not a surprise to you that our attendance is highest at the elementary levels and kind of goes down as students get older. So we'll continue to track that. I did add into these slides, and it's hard to see in this, this is more for your reference. Uh, this is how OSPI is tracking uh attendance, and we mentioned to you in a, um, in a memo about the change that they're making with that. So instead of looking at the um average daily attendance rate like I was sharing with you before, they are calling regular attendance as um on average, less than two absences per month. So less than two means you can only have one, right? Um, and so these are the percent of students who've had one or fewer attendance um absences in a month. And so it's just a different way of looking at it. Um, when you look at the number of students, um, and this is broken out by uh different groups of students as well. We are tracking it about uh fifty seven point seven percent of our students have one or fewer absences in a month. Um, and you look at uh our neighbors to the east, Evergreen, where they're at, and at state level, um, they're at sixty seven percent across the state. Um, and so just a different way of looking at it. This is Evergreen's data. I know that you um, you know, we're just so similar in terms of size and everything and, and location that they're a good comparator for us. And then I did also provide the state um data set so that you can see how that plays out across different groups of students that we're serving. Um, so we're going to continue to have those as part of our regular updates, so just expect um those to be there. I apologize, these are screenshots right from the OSPI report card, so they are, I see leaning in on the screen to try to make sense of it. So it is a, a, a better document to be able to have individually and just kind of look at that and see if you, there's some things you notice about or wonder about and like us to go deeper. So again, we've got the sense of belonging from the panorama data where students are self-reporting. We've got exclusionary data, and then we got just the number of students that are showing up each day. I know that a lot, a lot of our schools are moving back towards attendance programs, you know, during the pandemic. Uh, you know, before the pandemic, we were like, come on, get to school, you know, you gotta show up to school. And then um during the pandemic, it was like, if you have any symptoms, you can't come to school. And so now we're trying to balance that out afterwards. Um, and um, schools are really trying to uh make sure that families understand the importance of having students at school.
Well, uh, Dr. Snell, that was going to be my question. So tho- those numbers, the fifty five or fifty seven, I was trying to look at the graph because is that, is that, that's not current, that's the twenty one, twenty two school year?
Uh, correct. Yeah, those are looking at uh trends over time. Um, so the state actually did go back and start to recalculate like how they did this and give us some historical data. But I may notice at the state level as well, when they look back at that, we're eighty five percent, eighty five percent, um, ninety one percent, eighty one percent, and then all of a sudden sixty seven point two percent. So it's very interesting that across the state and in our local region, we're seeing that pretty significant drop from one year to another. Um, so more to come with this. Um, and, and like I said in the last meeting, we will continue to track our um average monthly attendance rate as well. So just give a picture of who's showing up and what's happening with that data. One, because of the health component of it, like we're continuing to track who's showing up regularly and what we're seeing with potential uh illnesses and having the effect that it has on both student and staff attendance. Okay? The next um data set is related to some student learning data. And again, how are our students doing? And again, I pulled um looking at trends over time. And again, small slides, so um these are directly off of our OSPI report card. And um the state is releasing updates, so I think it's important for us to look at what the state's tracking in addition to what we might want to track individually here as a district. Um, and this is the percent of students that passed all their courses in ninth grade um over the past years. Similar um horizontal scale, uh as Director Burrows highlighted with the attendance that we're looking at the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year to last school year. Um, and for us as a district, um, we, we did trend up with that category last year um from fifty seven point two percent um to sixty nine point one percent. But our high water mark was back in twenty nineteen, twenty. Um, and again, that was the COVID second semester where there were some accommodations made for the transition to remote learning. Um, if you look previously, we were at sixty eight point nine and seventy two point eight. So our, and, and this is all of our students, and then again, it's delineated by different groups of students here for you. Um, and like the other presentation um around attendance, I also pulled that for the state of Washington. Um, just to kind of look at where the state is, so seventy percent for the state. Uh, we were at sixty nine point one percent. Interesting that Evergreen uh was trending above the state with that, with some of their um programming related to ninth graders. So again, when we think about uh to Directors of Allah's uh comments, comments about like, well, what's working in the region? Or are there different places to try to learn and how to best support students? Um, and as you all know, ninth grade is a really important year to get behind on your credits. It makes it really difficult. Um, and it starts to take away choice uh in terms of what kids want to do in their schedules, so. So um coming up in May and June is our last student learning dive. And so again, we will have spring panorama data related to belonging. We'll continue to update you regarding attendance. And as um Missy from shared with the discipline, those were projections. And so as we get later into the year, we'll have more actuals about how um our students did and how we did with exclusionary data. Uh, and then we'll also have our next round of I Ready assessments. And so in the winter update, we provided I Ready data, which is a benchmark kind of progress monitoring um assessment. Um, and we'll be able to come back and show some of that and look at uh a full year or close to a full year cycle, depending on when we're having opportunity to look at this data and pull it. Um, so just um continue to, to talk about this and at, at our retreats in spring and August. I know we want to identify goals and think about what data do you want to see in these slides as we move forward each year? So that will be important for you to just be thinking about. I'll pause and see if there's any questions about the student learning portion. Okay, well, I'm going to invite a couple of other guests to help um share with us. Uh, I know I see Katie and Lisa from Point North on the call. And um we're going to talk a little about strategic planning and where we're at with that. And I know that you as directors did some homework uh to help us with that, so I'll turn it over to our guests.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We're so happy to be here this evening and appreciate the time with the board. Uh, we have a bit of a uh overview of kind of where we're at with the strategic planning process and um really kind of want to set the framework for this evening in terms of what we asked you to do prior to showing up for our session today and um what we're trying to achieve uh in our time together. So um as the board is familiar with, we have a strategic planning steering group that is facilitated by Janelle and Bill. And that group is actively involved in helping to move through this strategic planning process, and they have a meeting on Thursday. One of our outcomes is we're hoping to be able to, to seek some alignment around what does an outcome of our work together? What does a picture of our strategic plan look like, sound like, feel like? And one of the best ways to do that is to look to see what others are doing. So what are some best practices? What are some other um peer uh school districts that we may be able to look at their final products from their processes? And be able to discern what are the elements that really resonate with us? What are the elements that um perhaps are not something that we're interested in? And we spent some time really uh trying to ensure that we were aligning with some of those very initial conversations that we had uh the last summer. So the summer of twenty twenty two, where we met with each of the board directors and asked, what were your expectations um relative to a, a final strategic plan? And how do we um help to ensure the process is both equitable? Um, stakeholders are engaged and they see themselves in this kind of end product, and what would that look like? Now for tonight, given um you've already had a long meeting and um we really want to be able to kind of orient you around uh what feedback you have provided and how we could start to narrow a bit around um what some of those final deliverables might look like. Um, what we would like to be able to do is really kind of um get clear about a strategic plan and that portrait of a graduate. Now, in the examples that we provided, there were a lot of other things that um you may have seen and said, oh, I really liked that video. Or um that brochure explaining that strategic plan was really well done. And we've noted all of that feedback. That's probably later steps in our process. Right now, what we're really hoping to do is ensure that we have some alignment in terms of what the core of that strategic plan um looks like. So what's the framework and um how do we ensure that uh we don't go down a process and we get towards the end? And there's some misalignment. I thought we were trying to accomplish this, but you've given us that. And so this step right now is really just kind of that grounding alignment around um what those final deliverables will look like. And what we find is, is if we get into the details, working with you around colors and look and words, then sometimes we get lost. Um, and we, we step away from the content, so it's always easier to look at somebody else's finished product than for us to kind of get into the design phase right now. So um Katie's going to walk through a bit of um some of the themes that have emerged. Um, I wanted to share a little bit about process. You know, we looked at, I would say, probably over fifty different strategic plans. Um, and we're constantly seeing new strategic plans um that have been facilitated and put together. And um took all of those and started to narrow them down. Worked with um Dr. Snell and the leadership team to start to narrow down based on what they were seeing and kind of created a bit of that rubric that each of you had in terms of kind of a survey um asking questions relative to some of those plans that you saw. So we provided five different plans um for your input. And we've already seen some really good dialogue and comments and some areas of alignment. So that's really our focus today with again, that outcome being, we'd like to be able to take the plans that you feel comfortable and aligned around to that strategic planning committee on Thursday so that we can start to engage them and what that final product looks like as well. So. Any questions before we dive into some of the slides or details? You missed? Okay. All right. Great, Katie.
Thanks, Lisa. Great to be here this evening. Thank you all for allowing us the time with you. And I just really want to say thank you um to all the directors that participated in, in reviewing those plans and weighing in with your considerations. The, the commentary that was passed along and your time just spending having reviewed is, is appreciated. So thank you. Um, what we heard from you all in terms of what were some desires for a final product for VPS? And what was most important or critical for that is Is that we are aligning around a few handful of strategic priorities that we're not overloading ourselves with many, many different strategic priorities that make it challenging for us to keep track of what our goals are or how we're measuring towards progress. We also heard that measurement of success is really critical for you all. So making sure that there's space and time for us to be able to be clear about what those strategic priorities are, what those goals look like, and then how we are tracking progress. What does success look like if we're defining these goals? The Portrait of a Graduate was a piece in which you all weighed in on. And some of the plans provided as examples shared some, some clear portraits of graduates and what that could look like. This was an element that we'd heard from you all, I believe, back in our interview process about aligning around what is a portrait of a VPS grad look and feel like? What are those key characteristics? And you know that in our engagement process, those are some of the questions that we're actively asking stakeholders, that students and staff and the community are actively weighing in on. So we're hoping by the end of this process that we're able to kind of come to a clear sense of that portrait of a graduate. The infusion of equity incredibly critical and in terms of being clear on what equity means to VPS and seeing that threaded through the plan, that the equity is seen through all of the strategic kind of strategic priorities and you're able to see that commitment in it so that the equity policy isn't kind of a standalone, but it maps directly to the strategic plan and the strategic plan is a driver of that work. And then ultimately, we heard a lot of themes around, you know, we are not trying to build a, build a plan that's sitting on a shelf, right? And that collects us, that we want this to be, and especially for the cabinet, what we heard from them, a plan that is actionable for them, that they could use as a key decision-making map, right? So while they are making key decisions, that they can refer back to that strategic plan and be thoughtful about the direction in which the district is headed. So those are some highlights in terms of desires that we heard. Some of those dislikes that we heard from you all is lengthy documents, too much text, overwhelming amounts of text, or even just the language accessibility of the plans themselves, making sure that they are accessible not only to the district and staff, but they are accessible to the community abroad. Being mindful of the amount of strategic priorities within that plan. Again, the measurable indicators of success. If they're unclear, that's not helpful for us. And then the authenticity piece, we heard a lot of sentiment around plans that feel authentic to VPS. So as Lisa highlighted, we are not looking through this exercise to do a copy paste for VPS. This exercise was intended for you all to weigh in on what resonates with you. And we can take those key elements and start to think about how to create that that's unique to VPS. So these are just some kind of overall themes that we heard from, heard from you all throughout this process. Next slide, please. Lisa mentioned kind of a review guideline process. And so we thought this would be helpful just for folks to be reminded of what we asked you all to weigh in on when reviewing these plans. So we were all kind of using the same review rubric in terms of what we were looking at when we were considering these plans. And those were these kind of key eight elements. Everything from that district profile to mission vision, direction, key performance indicators, the accessibility of the plant and the overall branding. So again, while we mentioned, we don't want to focus too much on the, on the colors and the way that the plan was visual to you all. We certainly wanted to create space and time for, for us to get a sense of what drew your, drew your, to your attention. So we can be mindful of, as we're starting to build out those key elements of the plan, that it's really clear for us as to what we're working towards, right? If we can start to create a picture of what that final plan is, sometimes it's easier for us to start to build the content around that, so. Great. So the three plans that kind of rose to the top in, in that review process that you all weighed in on was these three plans in front of you. So Chicago Public Schools Plan resonated with you all. And the, the elements of why that resonated with you was around the accessibility of the plan and its language and just the experience of navigating that plan. And the goals were succinct. It was a three goals within that plan, so we'll talk a little bit about that. The clarity of the mission, those are some key elements that really resonated with you all. The North Shore School District Plan resonated with you in terms of the navigation. It was easy to see the, the goals of that plan, that there was a mix of visuals and words to be able to, to communicate what the key strategies of the district were and then measurements of the outcomes. So that plan, there were many comments around how that plan was probably the best example of showing key indicators of success around strategic plans. The Bettendorf Community School District Plan, some folks recognized that this was an easy to navigate plan. Again, there was a few key priorities and then within that, about a handful of goals that you could kind of map through. You were able to see kind of the measurable outcomes within that plan. And then there's clear mission and vision directly that resonated with who the district was. So in the next few slides, we're going to go into these three plans in a little bit more depth and just create space to kind of walk through them a little bit and talk about highlights of what I just shared. These are some of the snapshots of the Chicago Public School Plan in, on this page right here. So you're able to see the commentary that you all shared around what resonated with you is what we tried to grab a snapshot of. The three core with Chicago Public Schools that they really center around three priorities. So that's the academic progress, that operational excellence and that building trust. And then within each of those strategic priorities, or as they call them, recommitments, they have strategic goals and then ways in which they're measuring those goals. So there is some sentiment around, I like how tangible that feels. Like it's, it's three commitments that we're centered around. And then there's some clear goals within that and ways in which we're measuring that. So you can kind of see the progression on the screen of how to even navigate through that. There was also commentary around the accessibility of this plan. So this plan linguistically was accessible in the way in which it highlighted its information online through a blueprint access, making sure that it was offered in multiple languages. And the visual accessibility of it too, there was commentary around making sure that it was mindful of even screen reader adaptability and making sure folks could access it through, through adaptive services as well. There's also commentary around student learning being at the core of this plan. So some, some comments around really appreciating that academic progress was mentioned within, within this plan and that there were some key measurable indicators around success about how that looks and feels. And that the measurements of success for academic progress also highlighted the, the district's commitment to equity within that. So being mindful about how they're able to track academic progress through some of their equity considerations. Okay, the second plan that we highlighted and pulled out of your information was the North Shore School District Plan. This plan was kind of, I would say, more of a formal kind of brochure format that you were able to navigate through. We saw some comments from you all in terms of this plan was the, the most clear in terms of seeing measurable outcomes. So I could very clearly see that there's four kind of building blocks or four cornerstones for strategic priorities. Then within those, there's goals. And then I can easily clearly see how we're measuring those goals. And I can clearly map to within those goals, what the equity considerations are, how we're, what equity means to North Shore based off of that goal. So some appreciation around that. We also heard commentary around even just the graphics of this plan in particular, being able to see ourselves in this plan and, and recognize that the way in which it was laid out was, was helpful for folks. And that it was easy to navigate. These, I will call out the graphics you're seeing up there at the top, those bar graphs. That's directly from the survey that you all weighed in on. So that blue being kind of no evidence towards the, the indicators that we had asked you in terms of a rubric and the green being exemplary. So you can kind of see areas that you all felt like, yes, this plan is exemplary in this, in this area, while maybe it's lacking evidence in another area. Great. And the final plan that kind of rose to the top was the Bettendorf Community School District Plan. And this plan, again, easy to navigate. The measurable outcomes were important to you to see the commitment of equity embedded throughout the plan and in the goals and that the mission was really clear at the forefront of the plan to be able to see and understand who the district is. There is comments even about these icon, the uses of icon and imagery throughout the plan and just feeling like it was memorable or was easy to connect to as a reader. So we took some of that commentary too and, and tried to throw that into notes. As we, as Lisa mentioned, we're taking kind of notes in terms of even the visuals of what you all, what's resonating with you all as we think about that final plan. So those are the three that kind of rose to the top through the review process. And I will say, as Lisa mentioned, we've, you know, we've weeded through about fifty, down, down to a pool of about ten to eight and then on to you, we, we shared five. The goal now is to be able to move on a handful of these to the Strategic Advisory Committee on Thursday evening and have them weigh in with their key considerations as well. So that's kind of the next plan. Any questions before we kind of dive into discussion based off of the data that you all saw? Right? Okay, Lisa.
I spent a little bit of time today, kind of going back through our initial summary from our interviews back last summer. And one of the themes, actually, it was theme number two, the final plan product. I thought it might be helpful to kind of just mention a little bit about the themes that we heard. And this was reflective of individual interviews with all of the cabinet and the board, which I think was over twenty different folks that we talked to. And there were kind of three themes. And one was that clear desire to embed equity in the process and outcome, that the opportunity for alignment in the final product and plan, that it feels like and reflects the future of VPS. The second part of that theme was a visionary roadmap versus a clear and measurable plan and the need for both to coexist. And then the third kind of priority was that the priorities within the plan reflect our community's priorities. And so again, these are not reflective of VPS because they're different school districts. And so our plan is going to look and feel and sound different. The community and the engagement that has already happened and that's continuing to happen will continue to infuse the look, the feel and the sound of this plan. But we are curious, as you've spent some time, you know, really looking at five different plans and the way in which those plans have been kind of put together, we've taken your feedback. Is there one element that really resonated with you that you feel strongly needs to be reflected in the framework as we really start to build that piece out, which will be the next milestone that we'll bring back to the board, which is kind of how that organizing framework of the plan starts to, to, to look and feel. So this is really the point where we want to hear from you. So we've had a bit of the opportunity to share with you kind of where the feedback has kind of aligned. And maybe you can kind of see in some of the results where there might be some folks that maybe agreed or disagreed with pieces of, or elements of some of the, the plans. But what are your thoughts? And is there anything that you felt like, based on what you saw, that you really want to see reflected in your plan?
I feel like the accessibility piece is important to me. Like I know the, I think it was the Chicago Plan that actually had their plan translated into other languages. I feel like that's important. But I also think in the broader sense of accessibility, a lot of times in education, we speak education. And so there's a lot of terms and a lot of high-level language. And I feel like this needs to be not a strategic plan, you know, for like the cabinet or the, the higher level, you know, district office leaders. But this is like a community plan. And so I feel like it needs to be, you know, something that an educator could pick up, a parent could pick up, a community member, like anybody can feel like they can look at it and understand really what the district is about. Because I, I don't, I don't want it to be this, you know, like, wow, look how incredible. Like, you know, like, I don't, it's, to me, it's not important to like impress, you know, other districts or just have some, I don't know. I want it to just really be something that anybody can look and see, like, these are our goals and priorities. And whether that's, because I know a lot, when I was looking at a lot of the different sites, it's like they had maybe a flyer and then they had a website. Or it's like, here's this, if you want more information, go here. I mean, so there could be, you know, where things are broken down, you know, into great detail, you know, like somewhere. Because I'm sure there are people that want to see that level of detail, but for the main kind of piece, I don't know that it needs to be super. I mean, it needs to be clear and not just, we're going to increase learning and we're going to do this and that's it. But I don't know. I guess to me, that's really what I want it to be.
Great. Good. I appreciate that, Director Barrows. Other thoughts?
This is Director Decker, excuse me. I want to kind of build a little bit on what Director Barrows said is, part of being clear is by stating exactly what you mean by that. And part of stating exactly what you mean by that is explaining, how do we know when we'll get it done? Right? What's going to be the evidence that we have done this? And that's why I think I like the Bettendorf one. I think that was the one that like had some very clear metrics, like we'll know because we'll have this, this and this. We'll know because we'll have this, this and this. And for me, that, that's just really important. It's nice to, you know, say, oh, all of the kid, we'll have this, the graduates be able to think critically and do this and do that. But how will you know that they can do those things? So it, it's very important for me that when somebody looks at whatever it is, whether it's a brochure or a website, they can look and see, oh, they mean business because they have a detail, you know, not a strategic detail plan, but they have a way that I can look and see, are they keeping to that task?
I think that's a really good point, Director Decker. And it relates to that kind of accountability dashboard piece too, which I think VPS is already doing really well. And so just making sure that that piece is integrated as well as that reporting out element.
And I also think it balances its consistency too in, in how people interpret. Like, I might think that that goal means one thing and you might think that those words are saying another. But if you look at what the measurable outcome is, then you are both now seeing what the intent is for that goal.
I also agree with both my colleagues. And I just wanted to, I guess, build on it as well, that I do love seeing, for me, what equity means. I guess that was a big part for me for North Shore. I think I just, oh, it was a very focused on kind of, I guess, accountability on equity. And also, I agree with also the accessibility of not being like ten pages. I really did like the, just clear and concise and something that is user-friendly. Even for me at times, some of these were a lot to take in. And so I think, yeah, but I also really liked that there was an option of having like a blueprint where you're able to really go in and see much more in depth. So that was one. So those are two things that I really liked. And thank you so much, Trill. All of this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Director Zavala Artega.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, no, no.
No, I was just gonna say, I don't know that I, I think I, we're all kind of in agreement and alignment in thinking. I think that Tracy kind of beat me to what I was going to say in terms of just making sure that it's. Not just accessibility in terms of. People's primary languages, but also just plain language that's. Easy to translate for one thing, but also. Easy for anyone to kind of understand what we're talking about because I think we do tend to use a lot of edge of apple in our. In our language and talking about schools. I guess my. I'm, I'm very much, and I guess this is kind of in alignment with what Kathy was saying, I'm very much a concrete person, I like concrete examples. Which is one reason why I think that plain language is so important, so that people can. Understand clearly, but also see the application when it's happening. So when they see things happening in their children's schools or they're reading about what's happening in the schools, they can see the connections there.
Thank you, Director Smith. Good, it, it feels like there's some real alignment. I, I would suggest that these three plans move to the Strategic Planning Committee. And our recommendation at this point is to do a little bit of a overview. They haven't had the same level of time with these plans, but really trying to help to paint a picture of what that final. Deliverable will look, feel and sound like so that we can start to integrate their thinking into. How the plan development moves forward, because we're really going to start to pivot into now what is in the plan. Now that we have a bit of an image and a picture of kind of what it might look like and the elements of the areas where. We want to ensure that the plan contains, now we need to really work the content element of that together. So unless there is any objections or if you're feeling any pause in doing that. That meeting's in a couple of days, so we'd love to, to make sure that folks feel comfortable moving forward with that next step. Okay. Great. All right, well, that's the last slide, Dr. Snell.
Thank you Lisa and Katie for walking us through that and thank you directors for spending the time to just think about these things and give us those perspectives. It's really helpful to take it into the steering committee on Thursday. And just as a reminder, that steering committee represents our staff advisory, our equity advisory, our community leaders advisory, our student advisory. So all those people are coming together to review this. And to ultimately make a recommendation to you about what the final strategic plan looks like. Also, just in terms of the next steps, as Lisa mentioned, the content is really, you know, where we start to prioritize all the input that's coming in. And at this point, as we kind of guesstimate to the best of our knowledge, we are approaching about 5,000 interactions or data points into the plan at this. At this point in the process. And that next step of data collection is really what we called layer three in the earlier presentations to you. Where we are specifically asking about questions that either we want more information about because it's a theme that emerged. Or there's a group that we feel like we haven't heard from, and so we're going out intentionally to them about some of the themes that we're seeing. So you're going to see a lot of kind of movement around themes and, and content here in the near future. That's why it's so important for us to get a frame or a shell for what you, how you want us to display this and communicate this with the public. So after spring break, we'll have kind of another themed analysis from our DART team to kind of look at some of the data and present that. And those will go to the advisories and then also be updated to you. So it's been quite a process, we're really grateful for our partners from Point North. Who are, not only are they very skilled in this work, but they're also vocal and get it and have been in our schools a lot and. Our products of our schools as well, so we appreciate that. So if there aren't any other questions or comments or any other, just go to the cause from anybody. I will turn it back to Directors of all the articles to end our study session.
Thank you, I, I thought it was such a great meeting today, I don't know, I learned a lot today.
It was long, but good.
Do you have any other comments or questions before we end? Nope, thank you so much, everyone, it is 7:45 and our study session is over, thank you, we're not just.